All right, time being seven o'clock, I'll call on Monday, November 23rd, 2020 meeting of the accident planning board to order. First on, I'll first read the remote access paragraph pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 18, and the governor's March 15th, 2020 order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link to call in, or other similar options. In the event we are unable to accommodate the same, despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of the meeting as soon as possible following the same. No in-person attendance of the members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. And we will have a roll call of members of the planning board. Richard Escolas, Norman?
Norman, a blank.
Jeff?
Jeff Stafford.
Craig?
Craig Holmberg.
Roger?
Roger McCarthy.
And Dale?
Yeah, I'm a holder.
Okay, we have one, one member option tonight, I guess. All right, first item on the agenda, plans not requiring subdivision approval. We have none. Skipping down to action items. Entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 9th, 2020.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's been seconded. Further discussion? It being none, all those voting in favor, I vote yes.
Norman votes yes.
Jeff votes yes.
Craig?
I abstain.
Roger?
Abstain.
Roger abstains. Dale?
Dale, uh, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, I guess we have one particular item under old business. We have 125 Southbridge Street. Excuse me?
Hello, everyone.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thanks.
Can you announce who you are, please?
My, my name is Tom Dunn. I'm with Haven Extracts.
Okay, we received an email from Mary this afternoon. I don't have it in front of me. I didn't print it out. Mary, what's, what's basically the concern, action needed tonight?
We didn't, we didn't really, go ahead, Mary, sorry.
I'm sorry. So typically with a new business, before somebody can occupy the board, we need to make a recommendation for occupancy. They'd have to get the ASBIL. But this is an existing building, existing parking. So they, they don't have an ASBIL to present, but basically I wanted the board to be able to give their blessing to, for the establishment to get occupancy. So for the board to make a recommendation for occupancy. So the email that Tom sent says, I just wanted to update you. We are finished with the buildout at our facility and have our final inspection with Robert Lancy on Tuesday morning at eight o'clock, which is tomorrow. We only made changes to the inside of the building. We did not change the landscaping or make any changes to the outside of the building with the exception of a few small security cameras. Once we have the certificate of occupancy, we will, as agreed, make our next payment to the town of Oxford. The Cannabis Control Commission has requested the CO as well, so they can do their final inspection and then we can finally get to work. Thanks for your help, Tom Dunn, Haven Extracts.
I guess it depends what a definition of ASBIL, I mean, the inside has been changed, has it not? Is there, is there a document on that?
Yes.
I know the building inspector had something, but do we have something in our file, Mary?
Yes, the, Robert Lancy only requested that the architect do a certification that it was built to his specs and the architect did provide an inspection and certification that it was as-built properly according to the architect's specs. And he sent that certification to both Kenneth Sellers at the fire department as well as Robert Lancy, and Robert has that in his file.
I have it. It's, it's basically a construction control affidavit by, by the architect for the project.
Okay, so we have something, okay. It's not necessarily, you know, a site plan because basically the, the site hasn't changed. It's the internal, that's fine. I think, I think, I think we're okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve. Send a memo to the building inspector to approve the occupancy.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What are we, what project is this?
This, this is in the Boulder Park, one of the buildings they, they purchased the building in Boulder Park and basically they came in front of the planning board and for a change of use. Basically, the change of use was to warehouse marijuana products.
Yeah.
Greg?
Cannabis products.
If I could interrupt, they're actually a product manufacturer. They will be extracting product. If you would like to explain, Tom?
No, I think, is this the one, is this the one that I was on the board for?
Yes.
I think so, right? It was like, I had questions about the parking in the front, whether, whether there was enough parking, blah, 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 that sort of thing.
Yes.
Who's the parking for?
Yeah, can you believe how long it's taken? A while, hasn't it?
Okay, I, I didn't realize that this, I thought this was like something new and it was just kind of dropped in front of us. But okay, I'm all set, Rich.
Tony's gonna, Tony's gonna discuss another manufacturing facility basically across the street in Boulder Park in a little bit, but that'll be another one. This one here was, it was basically, we, we had the change of use special permit and special permit based upon the marijuana use also, so.
Just, just one more quick question. This isn't a sales, this is a manufacturing place. There's no sales going on here, is that correct, Tom?
Correct, no sales.
Right, okay.
Yeah, and I think the place going across the street is actually a cultivator.
Yeah, they're gonna be, I think they're gonna be, you know, growing marijuana product within their facility, within the building.
Yeah, I have an email into him that we, we were interested in working with him once he gets set up, so it might work out fairly convenient for both of us.
It could be. It could be. Could be a future customer of yours. I don't know.
No, no retail facility. We wholesale only. They get, everything gets put in a box and sent to a dispensary where it gets retailed. So we have no business, no customers, no traffic.
Right.
Okay.
All right, so.
Rich, I make that motion that you requested.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? It being none, I vote yes. Norman?
Vote yes.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
Carried unanimously.
Great.
You're all set, Tom.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Yeah, thank you. We'll need it.
Well, we all do it this time.
We should, we should have products on shelves in January, so thanks for all your help.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
All right, next on the agenda, we have two submissions. 133 Sapperapa Road, application for a special permit, an accessory in-law apartment in a detached garage, second, second floor. So, Mary, when, when can we do this?
We can do this on December, December 14th at 7:05.
Carrie, entertain a motion to accept this submission. By the way, they were, they, they were missing the tax page and that came in Mary's email too. They paid off their taxes.
Yes.
So they're up to date on taxes. That's why we're accepting this tonight. It is a complete submission.
Rich, can I just ask, Mary, has everything else been submitted per the regulations?
Per the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, per what the town requires for this permit.
I believe so. I can take a look at it.
The only thing I noticed it probably didn't have is extent of parking. They, they don't have a plot plan per se. I don't know.
I don't see a plot plan. That's something that I can, that's something that I can ask the, the builder to provide. You want to see that for the public hearing, plot plan?
Well, I think we got to know the extent of the driveway and type of parking that's available for it. They're supposed to prove that they got parking for the additional occupants. I'm sure they probably do, but we have nothing in front of us that says that.
Okay.
This is a good one, Tony, that maybe, you know, if it was, if it was going through, you might have picked up on that and maybe asked them to get that prior to submitting it to us. But we got, we got two weeks anyway, two weeks plus, so let's hope we can get it. So we, this could be a, a quick thing we do on the 14th of December.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, entertain a motion to accept this submission and to schedule a public hearing for, what'd you say, 7:0?
December 14th at 7:05.
December 14th at 7:05 PM.
I'll make that a motion.
Okay, Jeff made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second.
Seconded by Roger. Further discussion? It being none, all those voting in favor, I say yes. Norman?
Norman's going to abstain.
You're gonna abstain, okay. Jeff?
I vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
Carrie. We have another submission. Quayborg Avenue, application for a special permit to the applicant Donna M. Halloran, owner Justin O'Halloran, for an in-law apartment in new construction, detached dwelling also. And it, we have a complete submission. I guess this one has kind of the same issues. It shows what they're gonna do, shows the lot. They show a circular type driveway. And they'll look at the house. But we don't have any statement on parking. You got construction plot, construction outlay. This is the same type of thing, Mary. We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get a sketch of the parking.
Okay.
Hey, Rich, I'm looking at the application.
Yep.
Was something supposed to be checked about what this application is for?
It should have been.
Not, is nothing checked?
Yeah, I see that too. It's blank. It should be 3.9.1, same thing as the other one.
So, so this is an in-law apartment. Is that what they said the last time?
No, it's, this is a freestanding building now.
Yeah, I know. That's a, so the existing building, is any one of those a house already?
Yes.
So, so what are we creating, two houses on one lot?
And that's, you can do that.
You can?
Our zoning bylaw allows an in-law apartment.
Do they have to be connected?
No.
No.
I know several instances where they have that.
I know, okay.
What they can't, Greg, is they can't, when they sell the property, they gotta sell both houses together as one, one sale. They can't split the lot unless they need, you know, setbacks and all that, so.
As an accessory apartment, they can't, they can't.
You can have two houses in one lot and you can't separate unless you need all the, all the zoning. So when they sell.
As it's, as it's going on the plot of land, it's going in the opposite corner of the existing house now. They looked at it, she says, sheet one of 14. It's further back in the, actually.
It does show a carport.
That raises even more questions because you can't use the existing driveway that's there. So they need, they need to show access to this building.
It looks like there's another, it looks like there's two driveways, Rich.
And, and they are building a carport for the, I mean, that's on the page 15. So there is kind of some kind of a, I'm assuming that's to park in cars.
Which plan shows the, in two driveways?
It doesn't show a second driveway going to that proposed house. It shows a circular driveway that, that's there for the existing house now.
Right around the house, yeah. Okay, I see it.
Yeah, it's like, like a horseshoe.
So that, you could surmise there's plenty of parking there, but that doesn't help the proposed unit that they're planning, so. I think this is another one we got to, and they're also saying that Oak Street is unimproved. I don't know what condition it's even in. The other one's accessing the property through Quayborg Ave.
Yeah.
So.
I think it needs its unpaved, Rich. I don't know.
Well, I, it's.
I don't think it's an accepted street.
It's not an accepted street. It's like, it's like a, I don't even know what it is, to tell you the truth.
Could he, it could even be one of those streets that was never built at all.
Right.
I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll look into that.
Okay.
We'll definitely look into it.
Okay, because they, they gotta basically show up, an access for this proposed uni, this proposed building because it's on, it's on the far, far end, furthest away from Quayborg Ave as you can get.
Yeah, I can see that.
Okay. To the applicant.
Okay, anyway, we'll, we'll entertain a motion to accept this submission and to schedule a public hearing for December 14th at 7:10 PM.
Make that a motion.
Okay, Roger made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Dale seconded it. Any further discussion?
Yeah, just, just one thing. It says the driveway access is gonna be via existing Linden Street through the unimproved Oak Street on, uh, number seven on proposed construction of a single family.
Yeah.
That's where the access, that's what they're proposing, the driveway.
Yeah, I'm sure. They're gonna have, they're gonna have another, another driveway on that parcel of land coming from the opposite direction.
Opposite end of, yeah.
Yeah.
The question, I did do this once, and what I was told is that if it's one lot, one piece of property, that one driveway is fine. If you would, if you divide it up into two lots and make two separate properties, then you would need a separate driveway. So maybe Tony can check that out for us, but that's, I went through this years ago and that's what they said, that it's no different than like having a two-family with two different families and it's just that the houses are separate. But again, if they were to sell the property, if they divided it, they would have to have a new driveway for that. That's, I'm just throwing it out there because that's what I was told and like you say, maybe Tony can check that out for us.
Yeah, we just want to make sure they got good access to that proposed unit and.
Sure. I'll, I'll check on that.
Okay, I vote yes. Norman?
Vote yes.
Jeff?
Vote yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
Carried unanimously.
It's, it's more than 800 square feet, but I also noticed that, and we do have that in the bylaw, where if, if it's a handicap person, we can, we can, that it is over, but they did make a note that it is a handicap person.
That's right.
Or related.
Haven strictly done the 25% rule. Okay.
They are related as well.
That's good.
I'll turn, I'll turn the planning director report and updates to Tony Sousa.
Hello, everyone. And so my goal with, with this little section is either every meeting or at least once a month, just to kind of give a general update of where things are and by things. It could be a project that was recently approved, maybe under construction, seeking an occupancy permit, like, like we've, like we had one this evening. And just kind of report back on the different projects that have been permitted that are underway or may have been finalized and, and we're checking any of the conditions or whatnot. So, so this, this line in the, in the agenda is something that hopefully will be helpful and, and generally be a handful of topics perhaps. And again, hopefully the, there will, there will always be content, something to talk about. So, so for this evening, I just wanted to provide just really quick three bullets here. We submitted to you folks a communication from, from KP Law. They're our outside counsel and they do regularly provide updates on various topics, but certainly on, on land use. And you may have received these in the past as well, but just, we wanted to share with you this one in particular, and it's related to the timeframe to act on land use applications. So as, as was back in March, the, the legislature, the tolling period, they allowed for a 45-day extension once the state of emergency was closed, if you will, or when it ended. Needless to say, in early November, the, the state legislature actually put a, a hard date of December 1st while the state emergency is still ongoing. And this hard date to December 1st is anything that was sort of pending in the queue amongst the various boards, whether it be planning board, ZDA, conservation commission, so on, that they are to take action on the items. So if there was a, a public hearing that was put on hold since March or April, that they, the respective boards are to take action, are to open up the hearing. Or if there was a hearing that was continued, quote unquote, indefinitely because of the pandemic. And, you know, as I recall going back, as, as we all probably remember, is a big question mark back in March and April, how would we convene? How would we pull off with this new technology and how would the applicants take to it? And how would we ensure public input and participation? So there was some guidance put out there early on, as, as you folks may recall. And the most recent update we received was if there was anything pending in the queue again with, between the respected boards, that action is to be taken by, by December 1st. And this is again, what they call the tolling period, which is sort of the shot clock, if you will, that boards must take action. There, to my knowledge, and also defer to Mary on this too, I don't believe there was anything on the critical path relative to this that would impact us here in the planning board in Oxford, but again, just wanted to share with you folks this little update. And there may be others too, moving forward. Certainly a lot of uncertainty what will happen early next year with, with everything related to COVID. So we'll keep you folks informed if we learn anything else with respect to that. Don't know if there were any questions on that.
No, I think you're correct. I don't think we have anything that's outstanding with anybody at this point.
And it would be interesting to see, you know, at a larger level, I'm sure there are some towns that may be in limbo. And they do outline in the notice, as you probably saw, an opportunity where the suspension could be granted or extension of time. But does not apply here, it sounds like so. We're, it sounds like we're in good shape. The, the other item, the second item is BVO LLC. That is at Four Pioneer Drive. And earlier in the meeting, it was just mentioned. So they are seeking a tier two adult use cultivation facility at Four Pioneer Drive. And it's just under 10,000 square feet of cultivation. They are at their earliest possible stage. And what I mean by that is the applicant, Ken Lucas, held this community outreach meeting back in, I believe it was Thursday, November 12th, as I recall. And they have not filed anything formally with the town. They have submitted some, some basic information, sort of their, their business summary or their general plan. But nonetheless, they must still advance with a host community agreement first and then seek whatever local approvals would be required. The community outreach meeting is a requirement, as you folks know, of the Cannabis Commission. And the outreach meeting was done via Zoom. We were four or five attendees, including Mr. Chairman, and I apologize, I don't recall. There was also a representative from, from the corporate park as well. And I also was present too. The presentation itself was, was, was short. There was no material provided, just a very brief sort of overview, but not a lot of substance for, for us to chew on, you know, thinking about layout and, and the aesthetics, utilities and drop-offs and so on. As I mentioned, very much in the earliest possible stage with this applicant. After the, or during the meeting, I offered to, to meet with Mr. Lucas to talk a little bit more, to get a little bit more sense of, of the project. And we were to meet last week, but unfortunately he had to reschedule. So it looks as though either this week or next week, you know, we'll have a chance to, to formally meet. And where I can leave this at right now is, looks like maybe in the next month or two, there'll be some more traction and be working towards a HCA host community agreement. And perhaps early next year, there may be an application before us, before the planning board. So there is another one in the queue, I guess, over at Four Pioneer Drive. And, you know, looking forward to working with the applicant and, and of course, board and all the staff here in, working on this project, so. That's all I have right now for that. And I know, Mr. Chairman, you were there too, and I don't know if you, if you had anything else, or if I was missing anything, but that's what I had left in my notes for.
No, I believe, I believe that building exists on Four Corporate Drive, Pioneer Drive. It's, and they don't have any intention of changing the layout of the outside of the building into the parking lot. It's basically just, you know, gonna be a, a manufacturing center for cannabis, so. I just, I just told Tony, we just updated our bylaw on, on the marijuana uses in, within town and they're in the right area. I guess that's the word I use, that we're in the right area because that's area number two in the town of Oxford where we have an overlay district for this marijuana bylaw, so.
Yes, yes.
Want to make sure we, he critiques our bylaw too as we go through this process to make sure everything is done.
And on a side note, but it's still related, I, I believe it's either this week or next week, I, I read an email that the Cannabis Commission is considering increasing the amount of licenses in each community. And I don't know if anyone else read that or heard that, but they will be discussing that. It's not related to this, but, but it just, it's funny.
I guess on the dark side of being in a pandemic, that, that industry is doing very well. Towns are happy to get the income from, from these facilities.
It looks like it, right? Yes. So, so that's all, all we have for that one. And then the, and the last piece is, and, and I had a great conversation with you, Mr. Chairman, earlier today about various, various things in town and, and being the, the new person here and being the planner, no secret, we gravitate towards the, the master plan. And super excited that we're, that we have an approved plan and where, where there is an interest in implementation. And to me, that's actually the fun part with master plans. So I don't have a lot to, to, to talk about here, but other than to say that I'm, I'm happy to, to work with, with everyone on the board and, and so as I've said, Norm, you're the go-to on the master plan, would love to connect at some point. So thinking about 2021 and different things that we could implement are getting queued. uh, whether they need a capital funding or, or general funding or no funding at all. Um, just wanted to, um, to let the board know, um, that, um, certainly from our level, from staff side, and particularly myself, um, looking forward to, to working on the implementation. And, um, looked at all the different sections and, and the various recommendations, and I, I must say, there's a lot of, uh, good work that, that's been done, um, to this point, and I'm really excited. Uh, whether it be some ordinance revision, some, some talk about standards, um, any capital projects or all of the above. Um, but would love to, um, if, um, if any of the members, and, and so, Norm, I'm happy to, uh, at, at the convenience, at your convenience as well, to, um, to, to set up either Zoom meeting or call whatnot, and, um, and to think about, you know, twenty twenty-one and working on implementation here. So I'm really excited for it.
Rich, Norman, I, I deferred to you.
Actually a nice guy.
Hi, you've been on, involved in it since day one, so.
I, uh, I'm happy to hear that, Tony, and, uh, I, I would like, maybe we can meet next week or the week after, uh, when you're comfortable with that. If you know, there were a number of things that the, that the master plan recommended, and then we also designated which group or which, um, committee in town was to handle that particular thing. And, uh, there were three things that we talked, and we've already done a number of things with the planning board. Uh, but a couple of things, if you want to go over it now, Rich, is this three things that I think the planning board.
No, I gave it, yeah, Tony's here. Let's, let's get some action plan going.
One of the things we have to do, which to help complete our, our village district, we've done the rezoning, and we made some setback requirements and stuff. But issue that's come up for probably even before the master plan, a parking requirements, particularly in the downtown area. And, um, we need to take a look at that. Um, not only that, but also we talked about getting the planning board having a little more flexibility as far as parking requirements. In the example we lose, there's, uh, Home Depot came in, and, you know, so many square feet, so many parking spaces. Well, I would say at least twenty percent of that parking lot has never been the Home Depot. And then you come in and you look at Market Basket, and people on the board know this, the original plan that we approved met the requirement, and it wasn't enough. They had to go buy another, uh, additional land for another eighty-five spaces. Right? I look at that, and if that's okay, it's, you know, obviously through you, Rich, is we gotta look at a better way of determining the number of parking spaces. Um, and in addition to that, and particularly the downtown area, we don't count on-street parking. And I think it was last year, Mary, we had someone come before us, and they wanted to buy a residential home in our town, and they wanted the upstairs to be an apartment, and the downstairs to be a, uh, uh, investment counseling firm, and we're gonna employ two people. They had enough parking for the apartment and the two people that work there, but they didn't have enough parking for customer parking. And yet they owned over a hundred feet of frontage on Main Street, which would allow them to have four cars. So if we could make an adjustment there, where maybe we, we, we look at that and say, all right, we can, they can allow their customer parking here, you know, uh, which would allow them to buy that piece of property. We'll be able to put it to use to get the type of business that we want down, downtown, along with residential, so. Uh, we need more flexibility, and we need to look at that. And we've been trying to look at that, but poor Mary's been swamped. Uh, and I'm, I appreciate what she's been able to do. So that's that. Uh, the other thing is, we started working with the developer, uh, for that big project up in North Oxford, the three hundred and twenty condos. And we, we talked about changing our cluster development regulations. Uh, and where we had left it before the pandemic strike, they were gonna work with Ken Sellers and our building inspector, along with this new developer, to, to make it more feasible for them to maybe make a smaller footprint, and at that point, that would give us more open space. Because that's something else the people in town want. They want a more open space. We haven't had any luck getting money. So we felt another way of doing that is when we work with a developer, they can give the town some more open space.
Sure.
You can look at that, um, I think you can get the name of the developer, uh, and talk about that. There was, the only concern that the fire department had was they wanted to make sure the buildings weren't too close. So again, it's the planning board's responsibility kind of to look at that, so. And the last thing is, um, for years, the town has tried to get some kind of, um, we'll call it recommendation, and again, in the village district, as to what property's gonna look like.
Yes.
Finally, because we were able to get the involvement of the property owners there, we were able to get something passed. Where basically, any new construction, the, the facade of the building has to be approved by the planning board. Kind of left it open. But what we don't have is a list of things that we would like to see. Okay, construction materials, you know, tram, type of landscaping, all of that stuff. So it would, so when someone comes to the, to the town and says, I wanna do this, we say, well, you have to meet certain, that colonial type of thing. And they're gonna say, well, what do you expect? So at least we could hand them something, and they could look at it, and we could at least discuss it.
Sure.
A little guidance, and at the same time, it protects the town a little bit on, uh, getting that, uh, keeping a look that the people, uh, want. And by the way, all these things were approved overwhelmingly at town meetings. These are, you know, these are changes that we had as far as the zoning.
Great.
And the only other thing we might wanna get, there was a member of the historical commission on that, uh, on the master plan, and I think they would be interested in talking to us about things that they might like to see. With the understanding it's not a requirement, it's just kind of a guideline.
Sure.
And I mean, there's a lot of other things that you and I can go over that have nothing to do with the planning board, uh, but well, you know, I can call you next week or something.
Absolutely. Absolutely. These are all really exciting. Uh, they, they really are. And, um, you know, thank you for that. So I, I, I look forward to, to working with you and, and everyone else um, on these. They're, they're, they're really all great. The village district, the parking standards, these are all things that we all wrangle with. And, um, they're, they're our best practices out there, and there are things that, you know, where we experiment with as well, right?
Right.
To try to find the right mix and, uh, and adapt and adjust and depending what's going on. So looking forward to it.
And the town edge has done a good job of getting money and grants. I mean, I've had people, I had a friend of mine that used to live here, hadn't come in twenty-five years, and and we're quite impressed with the way, the things, the little things that we've done already in the downtown area with the plants and the benches and, you know, just cleaned it up a little bit. So we wanna kind of keep that going. I know we've got the, uh, what is it, Wayfair or something, that we got some money appropriated to do that.
Wayfinding, yes.
Wayfinding, I'm sorry. Chose you wherever I might, but, um, so, uh, again, it's been, it's been improving, but you're right, we do need to keep it going, because one of the things, the, uh, consultant we used said is, you know, you gotta keep things going, and you gotta, you gotta build, build a tailwind up. And we were doing good until we asked the town for money to redo the town bond and to redo the roads, and that just didn't, uh, that didn't fly. Uh, unfortunately, just gonna have to do something with the planning department. Um, and, uh, also the community center. That's something that we've gotta talk about, but we can talk more about that, that later. Thanks, Rich.
No problem. Norm, I, I, I knew you were gonna have a lot to say about it, and I, I told Tony that too. Because you were involved in this master plan from the get-go, so.
Yep. Oh, well, thank you.
Yeah, Tony and I had a, almost an hour discussion about things in town, and I think you guys, uh, mentioned a lot of it. The same things we talked about, so.
I mean, Tony, it might be a good idea, I'm not, I'm not being presumptuous, if Rich joined us on this thing too. You're okay with that, Rich?
No, that, I, that's fine. If I'm available, that's fine, Norman, but I, I know you, you were really involved with the implementation also.
And Roger was too, by the way.
Roger, Roger is the chair of the implementation committee.
Back, maybe Roger, you wanna join us? I don't.
Hi, really? Why don't you join, uh, Norman and, uh, Tony, Roger?
Yeah.
Why don't you, because, uh, like I said, I I was glad you guys dealt with master plan, because my, my idea of a master plan from basically the one I looked at early on, when I joined this board, was that it was, uh, all hopes and dreams, and it never came to fruition. Things happened because, you know, certain companies in town wanted to develop, develop here, and away it went, so. But I, I, I appreciate what I saw come, come out of that whole process after it started, so. So, anyway, Tony, I gotta tell you, I don't know what it is about your microphone that you got in that computer, but at times it's nice and loud, and then other times we can barely hear you.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry about that. Um, I don't know if it's me.
I don't know if it's you either, but I, there are times we can't hear you. I know, this, this, the whole thing about this Zoom stuff, it's kind of rates on everyone.
Might use this next time.
Uh, whatever, that's what Rogers, he's to be very happy there, so. Anyway. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Tony. Thank you, guys, uh.
I guess the pressure's on me tonight, Rich. I make a motion, will you adjourn?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Jeff. Further discussion there being none? All those voting, I vote yes. Norman?
Vote yes.
Jeff?
I vote yes.
Craig? And Roger?
Yes.
And Dale?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Everyone, have a good Thanksgiving.
Have a good vaca- uh, good, uh,
Thanksgiving.
Thanksgiving, the best you can, anyway. We know it's not gonna be like it always is, but.
You're safe.
Safe, that's about it. Okay, thank you.